I'd like to call the June 4 event for our council meeting to order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have with us this evening Asturba from Dimmigan Dinglelocker, he is taking for him his place for this evening, so we welcome him to his first council meeting. Personnel appeals part one, anyone with a personnel appeal, please step forward, sign in, St. Jeanne Manados for the record, and you have five minutes.
Vicki Groover, 672 Chestnut Street, Mayas. I'm here tonight to update council on Community Day, it's fast approaching. At this point, we have 23 confirmed participants, with three, maybe four, very interested people coming in. We've been working very diligently getting this event together, we've received quite a bit of donations, monetary and supply-wise, we got a nice donation from Crayola, and we're still working hard at getting the event up and rolling. I still need volunteers for my blood mobile, as well as my, I could use one more person for my dunk tank. At this point, the event has not cost the borough any money, anything that has been paid for, has been paid for out of the funds we raised. So, I mean, anybody knows of anybody interested in participating in Community Day, please have them contact me, they can get, we have our own email address, and also Jeff Schipst did a really good job of getting it out on the website, and I think we're pretty much on track for where we're going for this time, like, what we're doing.
Okay, come back.
I was just gonna first of all say thanks, and then that, that hasn't happened yet, but you've been very involved in getting everything organized, but also the commission in general, I think just the status of where we were last year at the same time planning the same event is light years ahead of where we are this year, which is, is great that we're this far in advance, and we've raised substantially more, more money, and also have a lot more participants, so I think the success that we had last year is, is going to be even more this year when, when the event happens, so, thanks for all the effort that you've put into it so far.
All I'm hoping for is nicer weather than we had last year.
It's not so hot. I think we'd all hope for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Good evening, this is Ray Gers, local resident, 557 Burnwood Street here in Mayas, you've seen me before for the EASA group. Just like to know how the city is still feeling, I mean, about the idea of a skate park. Kinda feel like, hmm, reading a lot of things online, and also, you know, reading the patch and hearing what, everyone has like a lot of naysaying going on about the youth, and being one that participates in this and has dedicated my life to it, I kinda feel like we still can make a change, but you just need, just need to work together, you know, we don't need a really huge place, but we also, I mean, there's many alternatives. I mentioned to other people that possibly, you know, zero money, zero budget, it would all be raised by us, and I still think it's possible, I've seen, I could send you guys links, there's places in Wilmington, Delaware that are taking rundown parking lots that are just used for drug use, prostitution, and anything else, and they're just taking control of it. It's a skate shop in Wilmington, Delaware, it's great, it's called Kinetic, and we can do the same thing, all we need is just a small plot of land, we can find contractors, I've been approached because of the association with home-based skate shop, to do something like this, by many of them are always emailing me, whenever Mayas is ready, you let me know, we'll work together on that.
Mr. Mayor?
I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't really feel that the enthusiasm has waned at all, I think we're actually waiting to hear any more information that you might have, so that we can work with you. Yeah, I, I mean, if you've seen comments, yeah.
It's still on your agenda.
Yeah, it's absolutely still on our agenda, I don't really see it changing until we get some more input as far as maybe some direction that, that you wanted to bring towards us, but as far as naysaying, I don't, I don't think any of the naysayings come from...
No, no, I know, but the community, I've, I've seen and noticed, not anyone here, but I just see a lot of posts, you know, and it's kinda like disturbing, because you're like, this really, it's not that bad, I mean, they're making it sound like kids are just like destroying everything, and, but I know we can try and find something, you know, there is always a happy medium, I think, you know, and I just wanna let you know, that's like my main reason here is this, the ASA still cares, you know, cared the whole time, and I still think like, I know you guys are working out things behind closed doors, which is totally cool, but we still care, and on a daily basis, I have kids coming up to me or private messaging me, just saying like, what's going on, we wanna get involved, just keep me in the loop, you know, and now it's carrying on to like parents that are in their mid-30s to early 40s, that are like, you know, I want my kid to go somewhere, you know, like Bethlehem skate park is, you know, 20 minutes out of the way, I want something in my hometown, so, this year...
Well, first of all, thank you very much, I, I can tell you that council and its committees has really, I, I would say even in the last couple weeks, has really been discussing the exact same thing you're here for. We have been in some negotiations over a piece of property, that may or may not be something that council wishes to do, or it may or may not be something that, that comes to fruition, but we've also been talking about a couple other spots in town, just like you were saying, you know, is there, is there parking lot, is there, you know, is there area in, in another piece of borough land, those are things that, that we, we have been discussing, it's just that, I think it's important though that we do find the right spot too, and, and that's part of, I think, some of their concern, but they have been discussing it, it was just discussed, I think, in General Administration Committee, did we discuss it, or was it...
No, it was Park and Rec.
So, we, we had just talked about that in our last committee, at, at my, we probably spent an hour discussing a property acquisition possibility, whether or not it was feasible, and whether or not, you know, it was something that both parties would be interested in. In addition, are there other alternatives? So, I, I think the council's really, I, I think it is at the top of their interest level, you know, I, I think though, the one thing that they did stress, and if I can speak on behalf of them, is that they wanna make sure that you guys are still interested, and you're doing your part, as far as, you know, if, if it happens, if council, if council makes that commitment, that, you know, your organization is able to take the ball and run with it as well, you know, and that we can have a formidable partnership, rather than, okay, there's the plot of land, now what? And, and I think that's their, their big concern, is they wanna make sure that if, if it happens, it takes off, but it's in a safe spot, it's in a spot that can be monitored, and it, you know, can be controlled, and, and that, it could also be a, a good recreational area for the citizens of Mayas, sort of, I don't think they're looking for the Bethlehem skate park here, I, I, but they're looking for something that would be good for, for the kids and even the adults that are interested in that type of area.
I was just gonna say, if you're available to come tomorrow to the meeting...
Yeah, 3:30, right?
Yeah, that'd be great, I, I've invited someone that had actually written us a letter maybe about two months ago, who was interested in putting together a pump track for bikes, and I said, well, why don't you try and tie in with, with your group? He, he was kind of interested in maybe making that as a fundraiser to generate some funds, so, that discussion could actually go much quicker if you were, if you were there, you guys may be able to connect and not necessarily rely on us to...
Is it Dave King?
It is Dave.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I've known Dave since we went to Pennskate, probably in like 1998, and he's very reputable, I mean, he does stuff like ESPN, you know, like...
Right, exactly, yeah, it sounded like a great asset.
It's a good one to have on your side, yeah, for sure, but, okay, well, cool, no, I knew there was this, we were all, everyone's doing stuff, they just wanted this, we still care, we're still trying to work, and we wanna do more fundraising, you know, like, I wanna do a lost soul board with, you know, green and gold colors to raise money for it, you know, and I'm just like, the possibilities are endless, and like, kids are still stoked, so, I don't know, I have something to report, so, I really appreciate it, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Hi, my name is Marion Miller, 748 Chestnut Street. I'm actually here to ask for your help. I have a problem with weeds with my neighbor. I, for three years, I have gone to, down to Zonell, asking for help, even got your organs, and that it's only six inches, I have weeds in between the fences that are six feet high.
What's your address?
748 Chestnut Street, 746 is the address.
Is it property?
Yes. She is entitled to put up her fence, I have no problem, my fence was there before hers, before she even had moved in. I was told to buy new fence, I was told to move, I was told to do it myself, to get rid of the weeds, I'm not gonna do it, because I will not destroy her property, and I was told by Jim that if it's her property, it's her responsibility. My PCP is highly concerned, it is a breeding area for fleas and ticks, I have five children, ages from eight to two, I don't know what to do, I mean, I have emails, pictures, I just took a picture before I left, I didn't wanna print it out to think that you guys, that I altered it, if you wanna look at it, pass it around and look at it, you're more than welcome, I need your help.
Mr. Mayor?
Is this something more appropriate for our weed officer to address than not Jim Farmsworth?
Uh, our weed officer has addressed, and that's, and that's what I'm working on here.
You have notes on the property?
I do, I think I, I've spoke with Ms. Miller, probably...
No, I never spoke to you, I spoke to Greg Neely about it, I had spoke to Jim about it.
Yeah, I'm definitely aware of your property, I, I definitely have had discussions about this, the area between the fence, and I, I know that this was passed on even further than I think our weed officer, I think we even attempted to send down the person that cuts grass for us, and there's another issue there, which we can discuss.
Well, something needs to be done, it is a health and safety issue, especially for my PCP to tell, I mean, I, I'm embarrassed, I can't people, I can't have people come to my house, it's embarrassing, and for somebody, for Jim and Zonell to tell me to move, or to put a new fence, I shouldn't have to.
Mr. Pepe, is there something you can bring up tomorrow morning at staff meeting, and answer and resolve this issue?
I'll speak on that, I, I, I do, I mean, I don't like to argue, but I do have a hard time believing that Jim Farmsworth tells someone to move, but I...
Well, he hung up the phone on me too, I said, you know, my children, and, and he said that's, the last words he said to me was, that's not my problem, if you don't like it, take it to council.
Mr. Holtzaker?
Can I see the picture?
Sure.
And this is your property?
This is my property, that fence is mine, the white fence is hers.
And how far apart are the fences, are they right next to each other?
No, according to your zoning for fences, they have to be a few feet away, or like a foot away.
And that is, so you're saying the neighbor's property, your fence is that on your property line, or?
Yes, I went and... Had my property surveyed, to prove the point, too, that's what I, that's what I was also told, to prove that it was not on my property, I went and spent $800 and got a survey about it, to prove that it's, that it's not on my property. I mean, all I'm asking is for help, and this has been going on for...
Ms. Miller, if we sent someone to take care of the weeds, would they be allowed to go through your property?
I told them that the last time, nobody ever showed up at my house, nobody ever rang my doorbell.
Okay, so what you're telling me is if, if I sent someone there this week to go kill the weeds, you have no opposition to that?
Are they gonna kill them, or are they gonna remove them?
They'll, they'll kill them, you know, our, if, if we're sending somebody to kill the weeds, we're not going to spend time removing them, we'll kill the weeds.
I don't know if you noticed in that picture, there's like trees growing in there.
I, I understand that, we would, we would probably chop it down, but they, they would try to kill, they would kill the weeds, that they would do, if they have permission, then are your property?
I told them before, all they had to do was knock on my door, I'm a stay-at-home mother, I'm home all day long.
Okay, Mr. Pepe, if you could revisit this issue then tomorrow morning, and we'll see if we can get the problem resolved.
I'm hoping so, because I really don't wanna have to take it to a higher level, that is why I'm coming to you, I mean, this is, like I said, ridiculous, three years, and it's, I feel, it's actually brought the value of my property down, I had my property assessed.
Does your neighbor own her property, or is it a rental?
No, she owns it.
Okay.
She owns it.
We'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
Anyone else with a personal appeal? Hearing none, moving to Community Minute, we do have one item for Community Minute this evening, and those are for all the NASCAR buffs that are out in the borough and around the area, the Casey Kane vehicle, his NASCAR car will be in the 200 block of Main Street on the south side on Thursday, June 7th, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., so if you wanna come out and see what an actual NASCAR car looks like, it will be there, he will not put his vehicle moving. So, we have that this evening, does anyone else have an item for Community Minute? Dr. Waddell?
If I may, I'm not sure if this is the right place, or if somebody else is reporting, but just to know the rain barrels, the Arts Commission's, the Art Commission, according to this, we have six rain barrels, we had them in the clock building, took them over to Vinart this afternoon to be clear coated, they'll be back later in the week, they'll be back in the window, and the bidding will start on, and they look great, we'll have some pictures up, I'm sure it'll be up on whoever wants, I think Hearing Commandant was putting out a press release as the pictures on, they look terrific, they are really nice. We have three starting bids already, on three of the barrels, $100, and the bidding, the bidding goes at $10 increments, we will have bid sheets here in Borough Hall, if people wanna come in to bid, and they look great, they, I think they're just, just really, really nice, they are art, they are really, really, they have different styles of art, and we really appreciate what you guys have done for us, so I'll keep you appraised at that as we go.
Where are they gonna be on the planner, we can actually go and see?
The first time, they'll be, we'll have them back in the clock building, in the window, hopefully later in the week, and then on June 24th, all six of them will be at the farmer's market, and then next three weeks, July 1st, 8:15, apprentice have one barrel there, but they will be at the clock, and then the final bidding will be at Community Day on July 21, and the final bid will be accepted right before the, the baseball game, and then winners will be announced at the baseball game, so, it's gonna work out great, it's just, just Holtzaker was over today, saw them, Jeff saw them, they're, they're really good, they are, they are great pieces of functional art, they're really good at that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I wasn't around town on, on Saturday, but I was just wondering if anybody could report on the community yard sale, if anybody took notice how, what the response was compared to other years, did we have a good, I mean, the weather wasn't the greatest, does anybody have anything to say?
The weather was awesome, it was great.
I drove all around, great, I liked that stuff.
It was busy.
Busier than usual, or same as last, past year?
Yeah, but it's always good, it's always good.
I'm just curious, 'cause I wasn't around, I'm just asking.
I think it was great, there were lots of people, I don't know what it is about Third Street, but there were a lot of people on Third Street, Thirden Burger, the whole way up into town, there were lots of sales, I made a summer, a sports camp in my backyard, I had stuff I bought, people, soccer nets, other stuff, it's great, I loved it, we had a good time.
I did hear along the way that Hallertown, I believe, had Community Day, Community Yard Sale the same day as ours, so, maybe there's other communities that are starting to copy us.
I thought it was bigger than other years, actually, the people I've seen, I thought it was very well.
It was a beautiful day, it was, very good, anyone else have a Community Minute? No, hearing none, we have special presentations, we have nothing this evening, which brings us to the reading of the May 21st Minutes. Is there a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the Minutes, motion by Mr. Leyenberg, second by Mr. Brown? Discussion, all those in favor? We have seven ayes, any additions or corrections? It's a very short meeting, so I don't see how we would have any additions or corrections, is there a motion to accept as drafted? Motion by Mr. Barrett, given their second, second by Dr. Liddell, discussion, all those in favor, we have seven ayes. Decision on bids, Mr. Pepe, we have nothing this evening? Communications, first item in our binder comes from Patricia Baricio, Senior Associate Director of Life Path Incorporated, it's actually addressed to the Parks and Rec Committee. On Wednesday, June 27th, 2012, Life Path Incorporated will be utilizing the East Pavilion at Mayas Community Park for our annual flying picnic, please accept this letter as an official written request for Life Path Incorporated to have a disc jockey present at this function, we anticipate music to be played from approximately 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at night, and she lists her phone number and an email address where she can be contacted, there's no action needed by council on this, we'll just use it as informational purposes. This letter comes from Owen Copley, she's the Township Manager for the Lower Milford Township, Board of Supervisors, the Lower Milford Township Fire Company will be holding their annual fire company carnival on Wednesday, June 13th, 2012, through Saturday, June 16th, 2012, and respectfully request the assistance of your fire police on those dates, Mr. Pepe, if you could forward that to Chief Price for consideration during staff meeting tomorrow. The next item comes from Matthew Tracola, Allentown Victory Church, this is addressed to Mr. Barrett, he is looking to have an event in Mayas Community Park in late August on a Saturday, he has a list of items that he would like to have considered for his event, I will be referring this to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Also on your desk this evening is a request from Shelley Steiner, as Representative of the Special Entertainment Commission, she is requesting a fee waiver to hang a banner over Chestnut Street, advertising the event song of summer, which is taking place at Community Park on August 10, we'd like to have the banner put up one week prior to the event, application for the banner will follow under separate email, which is also attached. Dr. Waddell, I'm gonna refer this to your committee, since it was your committee that developed the policy on banner installations. The mayor and I have received a copy of a letter that was addressed to Chief Faust, and it comes from Edward Harry Jr., Chief of Police from the McCunty Borough. Dear Chief Faust, once again I find myself thanking, thanking officers from your department for assisting the McCunty Police Department with an incident in our borough, on May 2nd, 2012, at approximately 04:45 hours, Patrolman Aaron McFarlane responded to the Brookfield Apartments in McCunty to investigate suspicious persons around cars in the parking lot of the complex, when she arrived, she observed the male duck down behind the vehicle and disappeared, when Patrolman Robert Alberger and Brian Hampshire heard Lehigh County Communication Center advise McFarlane that Alberger's Police Department was unavailable, they immediately offered to respond, your officers promptly responded, at which time Patrolman Alberger noticed a vehicle leaving the lot and acting suspiciously, your officers attempted a traffic stop on the vehicle, which attempted to flee, they pursued the car for approximately nine miles until it was stopped after driving over a spike strip deployed by the South Whitehall Police Department Officer, two suspects were taken into custody. Says court investigations determined that suspects had stolen items from several vehicles from the parking lot in which they were originally observed, it was also learned that they were involved in incidents in the city of Allentown, and subsequently charged with those incidents as well as the McCunty incident, please convey my gratitude to your officers for the prompt and professional assistance, without your assistance, I'm sure that these two suspects would have been able to flee and continue to victimize residents of Lily Car Valley. They are a credit to your apartment, and reflect the professionalism and cooperation constantly displayed by your officers, if I or any of my officers can be assistants to your department, please now hesitate to contact me, sincerely, Edward Harry Jr., Chief of Police from Borough of McCunty. Mr. Pepe, do you have anything further for communications?
Uh, no.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything other communications?
I'll wait for them.
Any member of council have an item for communication? That's all we have this evening for communications?
This one, I had written this last week.
Uh, that one I don't...
It was in our packet, actually. Public Safety Committee, Leanne Gilbert, Council President.
Oh, breakfast food parking ticket, yeah, this is already on my agenda for the next Public Safety Committee, this came in back in May, Sandra Ritter apparently received a parking ticket on Sunday while she was in church, since we do have an issue with parking on Sundays, this is already on my agenda, so, we will be handling that next meeting. Borough Engineers Report, we have no engineer this evening, so, he's gonna report progress. Solicitors Report.
Madam President?
You are on!
I am, and I had believed that a Solicitor's Report had been provided earlier by email, it has not been received, it will be emailed first thing in the morning to the District of Justice Council.
Very good. Unfinished Business Part One, we have nothing on the agenda, New Business, we have nothing, unfinished Business Part Two, we have nothing, Items Not on the Agenda, Subject to Rule Nine, any member of council have an item that they'd like to bring forward? Hearing None, Players Report, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, this will be short, I had a couple complaints about, when we had the parade on Memorial Day, and I wasn't aware of it, but, a portable potty should be placed, you know, when, like we have when we have the Halloween Parade, like someplace, after the people walk in the parade and all that, there's no place to go to bathroom, the church up there doesn't have it open for you to use, so I think that's something that we should really see for the future, that's all, progress.
Thank you. Committee Reports. Public Works, Mr. Leyenberg?
We will be meeting here June 7th at 3 o'clock in Council Chambers, there's something to report on, progress.
Thank you, House Silence Station Conservation, Mr. Schipst?
Yes, our next meeting will be Friday, June 15th at 3:45, nothing to report, progress.
Parks and Recreation, Mr. Barrett?
We will be meeting tomorrow at 3:30, progress.
Thank you, Public Safety, I have nothing to report, other than we will be meeting June 14th at 3:00 p.m. General Administration, Dr. Waddell?
Madam President, we're gonna report right now, our next meeting is June 13th, 2012, not in Council Chambers, progress.
Thank you, Budget Fighters, Mr. Holtzaker?
One item, Madam President, it would be Letter in Your Packet, the bill list, and I'll read the resolution, Resolution 2012-16, resolved by Borough Council, do authorize payment of the June 4, 2012 bill list as follows, bill list, $168,066.20, payroll number 11, $116,781.3, payroll taxes, $38,480.32, for a total of $323,327.55, done this 4th of June 2012, and I will make that into the form of a motion.
There's a second, second by Mr. Schipst, discussion, all those in favor? We have seven ayes.
Nothing else to report from my committee, progress.
Thank you. Community Relations Planning and Development, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam President, I have two things that I wanna share with full council, Letter up in your packet, if you would mind turning there, and also on your desk tonight, you have received a letter sent to Mrs. Virginia Savage from Lehigh County Housing and Grant Manager, from Jeff Plapper, this is the application, two things...
I didn't get that.
I didn't get it either.
Maybe just your committee may have received probably...
This I got it.
That doesn't make it a better sign.
Just, we, we met, unfortunately, Mr. Schipst was unable to attend, we met last, no, two Wednesdays ago, and we had two, two issues that we wanted to discuss and bring to, to closure here, the BFW Pocket Park, this project deadline is June 30th, the project is costing around $12,000, the total project, what we're gonna be having there is benches and planters and a flagpole that will be placed there, the flagpole, as you know, a couple weeks ago, Mr. Bernhard Katusko, the son of Ben, is donating... ago, Mr. Bernard Katusko, the son of Ben, is donating that flagpole $2,050. The benches and planters are in, they are delivered, we have one more week to go for the flagpole, it will be black, flagpole, and the block is on order as well, so we'll be getting that, everything should be done at June 30th for this deadline in front of the VFW, with the donation of $2,050 and, you know, this $12,000 project, when everything is said and done, we will only, from the borough, we will only need $4,000, so, the return on investment, what I want to celebrate here is the return on investment is very good, we got a $12,000 project and it only cost us $4,000, so I'm very happy with that, and I'm very excited with the CDVG and the county for helping us with that, there also will be concrete patchwork, if you've been in front of the VFW, there's some concrete that's kind of busted up a little bit, we're gonna be repairing that, we're not gonna be replacing what we're gonna be repairing, also, there also is gonna be some other changes that's gonna segue here to my second point, the tree vitalization project, which has been ongoing since last year, that project is also due June 30th, and that is on schedule to be completed by June 30th, the total project cost for this is $800, we're gonna get reimbursement from DCNR for about 66% of the cost, basically, the bottom line is, we're gonna get seven trees for the amount of around $272 from the borough, so again, another great return on investment, seven trees for less than $300 bucks, I don't think we can beat that, in front of VFW though, if you go down there today, and if you go up, if you, actually, let me, before I get ahead of myself, turn in, in, in your packet here, the next page is over, I have a couple, a couple colored photos for you that I grabbed off of Google, and in the highlighted area, the trees that I highlighted, you will see, for example, the VFW, those are the two Bradford pear, again, these are all Bradford pear trees that are gonna be replaced, the highlighted trees are the ones that are gonna be replaced, so you got two in front of VFW that will go very nicely with the VFW Pocket Park that is being done, and also, you have a tree in front of Lent's Hardware that is highlighted that is starting to be diseased, that again is a Bradford pear, and then also on Main Street and Cherry, if you look at the photo, is another diseased Bradford pear that will be replaced as well, I talked with Mr. Clapper today, our Public Works Director, he did share with me that the project, that they removed the trees from VFW, as you can see, there's still stump there, but also the Cherry and Maine are still there, or is, is taken out, and also in front of Lent's, the tree has been removed as well, so, the planting should take a place, if the weather cooperates with us, maybe at the end of the week here, we should have the new plantings, the DCNR has approved the Ogami Cherry Tree, if you go up on Broad Street to the New Islands, that is the Ogami Cherry Tree, now that's a little different species than what is on the triangle, the way it grows, and the type of, and the direction that it grows, it grows more straight up, it's not an umbrellaing tree, it's more of a, just a nice little shaped tree, but at, at CRD, we, we wanted to make a motion to accept the same species as Broad, Broad Street Trees, the Ogami Cherry Trees, for there, and so, I just wanted to bring it for a motion for, to make sure everybody else on council would like to, like that choice of Ogami Cherry Trees, so, I'm gonna make that form of a motion to accept the same type of species of Ogami Cherry Trees as on Broad Street.
Sir Second, second by Dr. Widdow, discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Maynard?
I just wanted to confirm with Shane that everything as far as a grant is taken care of, everything's proper.
It is now.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, it took a while, but we, it was a very convoluted process, but it took us, Mr. Clapper and I literally together were about three hours on the phone with DCNR to try to straighten out everything.
It was, yeah, it was a little bit convoluted, but they've done it very well.
Yeah, yeah, so very happy with the outcome now, that's what I'm happy, I'm happy with the way the projects are going and the way the downtown's gonna be upgraded, I'm very excited about it, really, any other questions before I say progress?
Yes, of course.
Oh, sorry.
Any further discussion?
I thought we did.
All those in favor, please step in us, now we may report progress.
With, with that said, progress.
Thank you. Ad Hoc Committee, Mr. Barrett?
Progress.
And Personal Appeals Part Two, anyone with a personal appeal, please step forward, sign in, state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes. Hearing None, Borough Managers Report, Mr. Paffey?
Uh, my team packet is a report for any significant revenue and expense items in May 2012, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, otherwise, progress.
Any questions for Mr. Paffey? Thank you. President's Business, I know last week we got out of here at 7:35, but unfortunately, tonight I do need an executive session, so we will be in recess at 7:36 to discuss personnel matters, when we return, I do not anticipate any action, so we are in recess at 7:36.